And then share it from Robert's page to mine. Us via Facebook Live, there we go, share to page. All right, so I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you for coming out for the candidate forum tonight. We have a couple elected officials in the audience. We have Laura Hughes, who's our school board member. And we have Virginia Dare, Soil and Water Conservation Director, Leslie Jones. Welcome. Okay, we also have other city council members, but they're in the forum, so I will let them introduce themselves. So the forum tonight, the candidates will each have one minute to open. We will go from both my right to left, right? And then after that, we will do Scott with questions. So the first question would go to Michael. I hope you all don't mind my using your first names, right? And we'll go in around Robin, so then the next question would go to Conrad and then Eric and so forth. Okay? And if we run out of time, we're going to do yes and no questions to try and get some of all the questions done. The candidates that are here have paddles. Those of you on Zoom, if you could maybe get a piece of paper, write yes on one side, no on the other. And that'll suffice. Or we'll just say, you know, yes or no, we'll ask you if you don't have that. All right? And then you'll have one minute for closing. And for closing, we will start with the last person all the way to... Yeah, it looks like it's Rosemary over there, right? And I had it backwards because before they were switched. We'll start with the last person and go all the way back this way. So now we'll start with, oops. We're not going to do this again, are we? Yeah, it's still on. I can speak really loud, anyway. Okay, so we're going to start with opening remarks with Councilwoman Jessica Abbott. And there it goes.
Not yet. I'm going to make sure we can hear you first.
Okay, everybody knows you got hand sanitizers on your tables. If you guys have them on your table as well, if you need to, because you're sharing a mic, you use a glove.
And where are your timekeepers over here? We'll give you 30 seconds, 15, and stop.
Okay, yeah, so watch them.
She can go in straight by you because she's on a separate mic.
Can we start with Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, Jessica.
Well, thank you so much.
Turn the mic on.
It is turned on. Hello?
That's better, are you better?
Hello?
Yeah, that's better.
All right, am I on?
No, no, go ahead.
All right, good evening. Thank you all so much for coming. My name is Jessica Abbott. I am the current Kempsville District Councilmember in Virginia Beach, obviously. I ran in 2016, and I am finishing up my first term. A little bit about me, I am a small business owner here locally. I have two kids and one just entered kindergarten, and we had a fun bout with virtual learning for the first two weeks. Unfortunately, we are back in school full time. My husband is a teacher in Virginia Beach, and I am very excited to be here and answer your questions. So thank you so much for having me.
Michael?
I do not see any picture of the candidate that's speaking. All I see is you and...
You will have to go on Facebook to see them, okay? They're not on Zoom, they're here in person. If you want to go to either the Tea Party Facebook page or Robert K. Dean's Facebook page, you will see it on Facebook, okay?
Oh, I can hear it, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, now we'll start with Michael for your opening comments.
Hello? How about that? Well, good evening. My name is Michael Berlucci, and it's really my great honor and privilege to serve you on our Virginia Beach City Council. And I'm really happy we're here together in the Rose Hall District where I have the privilege to represent. Last year, I was here before you to ask for your vote in a special election to complete an unexpired term. And I'm here back again to ask for your vote for a full four-year term to continue the work we began together. But the reasons I was here last year, and I'm with you again tonight, are the same. It's that I love Virginia Beach. I was born and raised here, my family lives here, spent most of my life here, graduated from beach schools. And I'm really excited about the chance to continue to be part of a team that works together to make our city even greater, to ensure that every single person who lives in Virginia Beach has a chance to fulfill their full potential. There's a few conditions I think we need to have in order to achieve that, and I hope we have a chance to talk about that tonight. But I just am here to thank you for the chance to serve and to respectfully ask for your vote so I have a chance to continue to serve you in our city council. Thanks.
Okay, Conrad?
Testing, I hear myself. I went to Glenwood Elementary, I went to both Salem's, I went to ODU. I volunteered with ODU and NSU Athletics. I helped local campaigns and worked in four customer service jobs here in Virginia Beach. I'm a simple guy, I have ideas. And in seeking your vote for city council to represent you, I want to turn those ideas toward flooding, strengthening bus transit, minimizing the gaudy development that is Oceanfront based. I want to help our city on the cost of living, social equity, and social justice. I don't need big business money to do that, I just need your vote. Thank you.
Eric?
Well, good evening, everybody. This is, my name is Eric Ray, and I'm so glad to be among you again. I'm running for the city council seat representing Centerville District, and I'm glad that you all are here tonight. Thank you all so much for being here, thank you for having us. I'm a small business owner. I started my business from the ground up. I'm a funeral director. I started the Yvonne Ray Funeral Establishment back in 2005, I'm sorry, 2015, excuse me, I got my ears mixed up. 2015, and we started from scratch. I didn't get it from my dad or my granddad, it wasn't a big quest to me, it was something that I started, it's my baby. And I sit before families during their most vulnerable times. And that heart of service is what I want to bring to Centerville. Because at this point, at this moment in our life and our career in Virginia Beach, Centerville needs someone to sit before them during their most crucial time. There's civil unrest, there is improper representation, and I think, Centerville, we can do better. You are privy to the information that city council knows when Eric Ray sits on city council. So I can't wait to hear ideas. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to having a strong, vigorous conversation tonight.
Okay, Bill, if everybody could please say of your applause to the end, because we have a lot of questions, we'll never get through them all. Bill Dale, you're the next person. Could you say what district that you're running for and do your one-minute opening?
Thank you, Diana. My name's Bill Dale, running for the Kempsville District. Been a resident Kempsville for better than 40 years. Have had two careers in my lifetime. The first half for about 24 years was a Catholic priest. Robert Dean used to come to the church, actually. And for the second half of my life, I've been a financial advisor. I'm married to Paula, who's a retired assistant principal in the Virginia Beach school system. My 40 years living in Kempsville in the Beach area, I've spent a good bit of time working in the city, served on the personnel board for 12 years, the IRP for five years, helped to organize the Human Rights Commission, worked as a chaplain with the police force. I'm pleased to have been endorsed by the teachers, the firefighters, and the police officers. Look forward to the opportunity to serve the beach further, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Okay, the people on Zoom, when you're not speaking, could you like mute your mics so that we don't hear any background over there? Okay? And Gary Hubbard is your turn. Please say what district you are running for and give us your opening comments.
Yes, thank you, Diana. I'm Gary Hubbard, and I'm running for the Rose Hall District for city council. As some of you may or may not know, I'm a commercial and residential construction contractor and a small business owner since 1981. I'm a proud Navy veteran, and I'm the only business owner and veteran running for the Rose Hall District. I believe experience counts, I believe I understand the true meaning of the word "infrastructure" and what we can and cannot do on mitigating and deftening the environment. So I ask for your vote, and I ask for your support. I believe I have the experience to guide us through this pandemic and through our economic, Russian devastation. Thank you.
Okay, next is Nadine. Could you tell us what district you're running for and give us your opening remarks?
Thank you. My name is Nadine Kenesha. My mom calls me Nadine Murray, that's where that came from. And I'm a 34-year resident of Virginia Beach. I've raised a son here who graduated from VMI. Sadly broke his leg in half in a soccer match and couldn't go forward in the military, but he is a teacher, very proud of him. He is a biology teacher at Ocean Lakes Math and Science Academy. And I'm very happy that he moved home after school, and so many other parents aren't that lucky. I sit on the board of the Back Bay Restoration Foundation and the Vibe Creative District, and I'm very passionate about the environment and flood mitigation in our city.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina?
Good evening. I'm Councilmember Sabrina Wooton, and I represent Centerville District. I came onto council in November 2018. The day after the election, I came to one of your meetings. And at that time, I did tell you that I understood that many of you did not vote for me or support me, but I was there to represent you. And I'm back again tonight to let you know that. I'm here to serve and represent you. Now, I understand, since I was on council, that we've been through some difficult times. The May 31 shooting, pandemic, civil unrest. And let me be clear, I do not support violence or looting, but I do support peaceful assembling. And what I want to do is focus on the things we have in common. Supporting public safety, addressing flooding, and also making sure that we address and help and support our local businesses. On November 3rd, I'm asking for your support to be reelected. For more information, go to sabrinawooton.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosemary, you're next.
Good evening. Rosemary Wilson, I'm the incumbent running at large, and I'm so happy to be with you tonight. I am a lifetime resident of the city. And I started school at Bayside Elementary and finished at Bayside High School. Went to Old Dominion and became a teacher, and I taught in this city. And I was married for 38 years, and then I became a widow. I have two daughters, and this city has really been a huge part of my life. I'm going to really be focusing on jobs, jobs and jobs, because in this time of the pandemic, we've got to get back on the ground and then get people in work and economically sound. And this council has done a lot to put money into grants for small businesses and residents and nonprofits so they can keep their lights on, pay their lease payments, and keep working. And we also did a lot for the restaurants with the meal tax holiday, which actually was my idea, to get people to eat out and use the rest of months.
Awesome, thank you. So now we'll go to the first question, right? All right, Michael, so you get the first question. We had somebody that FOIA'd the event that Black Lives Matter did from Town Center, I mean, from Mount Trashmore to Town Center, and it cost almost $150,000. And we found out that that was not a permitted event. Did, and you and several other council people all marched in that. Did you know it was an unpermitted event? Did you think it was proper to shut down a whole street with businesses that couldn't, you know, get customers?
The question is, did I know that it was an unpermitted event? And is it proper to shut down Independence? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, without a permit, yeah.
I did know that it was an unpermitted event, and I do think it was proper to shut down Independence Boulevard. And I was proud to attend that event, because I represent all the people of Virginia Beach. And it's my responsibility as a member of council to listen and to learn and to understand the issues that we face today. We're living in historic times where people are seeking access to opportunity, to equity, and to justice. And I would say that what was happening that day in particular was peaceful, it was positive, except for a few small exceptions.
That, yeah, that event was...
With some small exceptions. And the issue of cost is important, because I would just submit to you, as people who I know love liberty and care about liberty, be careful what you ask for. Our First Amendment is crucial and critical. And what happened that day was the city allowed people to express themselves in a very tense moment. And I'm proud of the way our police officers managed that, and the city of Virginia Beach responded, and the way council and others took the time to listen and learn. Thank you.
Conrad, did you march in it, and would you have if you were a councilperson?
I was working at the time at the Oceanfront, but I would have marched as well, just like Councilwoman Abbott did, Mr. Berlucci did, Mr. Rouse did as well. I would not have shied away from mine, show my voice as well alongside theirs. It's an important moment in time, I would not have skipped away.
Eric?
I had a feeling that day. So when we talk about, let's look at both sides briefly. $150,000 is a lot of money for the taxpayers for free speech, it's a lot of money. While I do agree with some of my debates here, I probably would not, I wouldn't have not marched. When you do have other groups who are being silenced, who aren't even taking up streets, who aren't even having to pay for anything, their protest costs nothing. Why are they targeted, and why are they told that they can't march or they can't protest? They can't stand at the side on, in, on the corner of Independence and Virginia Beach Boulevard? Why are they told they can't stand there, but we have to go and bow down to a group or to some kind of organization just to not be called racist?
Bill? Bill, turn your mic on.
I was not at the march, but I fully supported. I make Mike's comments my own. The nature of protest is oftentimes you don't get permission for it. And probably take the lesson from the original Tea Party. I don't think they had permission for that either. In any event, it's a First Amendment right, and some people really believe the First Amendment is something to be adhered to and something to be protected at all costs, and I tend to be one of those people. I believe it served its purpose well. Fortunately, it was peaceful, and I applaud the people who took part in it.
Thank you. Gary?
Yes, thanks, Diana. First and foremost, I support what Mike and Bill just said. I support the First Amendment, the right to freely gather and protest and have your voices heard. I do believe the very nature of protesters is meant to disrupt factions or disrupt the very fabric of other people's ideas and places. But I also have a problem that we need to get to the root of why we protest, or why there are protesters. Until we actually get to the root of this protest, we will continue to see disruptions. So we need to actually look at the perspective that we're facing from the pandemic, from the Russian economy, and from racial tensions. So let's get to one of these problems, because if you define the problem, you're acting there to a solution. So I would ask for that on that end of it, but I fully support the right to protest.
Okay, could everybody like mute their phones and keep the chatter down? Because I'm getting feedback up here. I don't know if anybody else is. Okay, Nadine?
Okay. I did not attend that particular march, but I did, there was a pastor prayer meeting at the, at Mount Trashmore prior to that, and I did attend that. And I have to tell you, it was, I don't know, I think that one was permitted. That was the most incredible experience I've had with this whole social unrest challenge. It's eye-opening, and I felt that was the right place for me to learn and try to understand and bridge a gap of social unrest and social injustice that's occurring. So I personally would not be attending a protest that wasn't permitted, simply because I don't like to put myself in situations that could potentially erupt. I just, I've been there before in my life, and it's just not anything that I want to do. But I fully support folks who protest, and I especially loved the pastor, the International pastors protest. It was a peaceful prayer meeting, I guess is what you call it, it was great.
Okay, Sabrina? Sabrina, can you hear me? Sabrina?
He's muted, hang on. Okay.
Sabrina? Hello, Sabrina?
This is the first time I'm hearing your voice.
Oh, okay.
No, I did not attend the protest, was not aware that it was not a permitted event. While I do believe in the right to assemble and peaceful protest, I think it's also important to follow the rules as it relates to permitting and following the rules of the city or the state that you're in. The police officers in the subsequent protests were, made it a point to reach out to those who were in charge of those particular protests, to ensure that they knew the rules and that they followed them. And I think when they know the rules and they understand them, things work out a bit better.
Rosemary?
Absolutely. The First Amendment is critical, and everybody should have that right. And with the social unrest, I think that there's a lot of things that we need to do, and we need to listen to what's been said. However, there's a way to say it, and there's, there are also the rules of law that every, all of us have to follow. And you have to have permitted evidence, and you have to follow those. I know in the month of June, we spent half a million dollars in overtime on the police, just the month of June. I know that the Filipino group, they're having a motorcade this weekend. They did it right, they went and they got their permit, and they're going to have their motorcade. I've attended several down at the Oceanfront, and you know what the rules are. You're supposed to stay on sidewalks, because the sidewalks are open for everyone. But rules and laws are there to protect everyone, and you still have the right to speech. I think that's very, very important.
Thank you. Jessica?
Well, when I recall, well, to answer your question, I was there. And when I recall how I found myself there, I remember speaking with the interim police chief, and he said he was going to be there, and all of our top deputy police officers were going to be there, and many of our sworn officers were going to be there. And as your council representative, I said to myself, if we're going to send our officers there, then I have an obligation to go too. Part of our job on your council is to be present and listen to everyone, to hear the problem and to be accountable to it. And I deeply, deeply hold that as a part of my responsibility. So I felt it was important to be present, to be a good listener. And I will say, our police did an excellent job in keeping that safe. They made decisions with the event organizers to close the roads so that people remained safe. And at the end of the day, that demonstration was successful because our police and the organizers partnered together, and they did it the right way.
Thank you. Is everybody on Zoom muted, because I'm still getting feedback? Okay. All right, first, you still getting feedback?
Sabrina's not muted.
Sabrina, are you muted?
Gary's not muted.
Gary, could you please mute? All right, Conrad, you get the next question first. What is your highest priority if elected? What do you want to accomplish?
I live in the Greed Run area and very nearby Princess San Plaza, which is, of course, right near Woods and Woods. Flooding is always going to be the most important thing for me to handle. I want to make sure I don't defer flooding projects, I want to make sure I don't cut from them, and I want to go to both Richmond and DC to get supplemental funding for it, because we can't do it by ourselves. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Eric?
Okay, so this is like deja vu all over, getting back in 18. Everybody's big thing was flooding, and that's mine, flooding. If you've ever went through Punggol, you've ever gone through Punggol, and you've ever gone through the after-storm, it is the worst thing in the world to see people's houses on stilts and the water coming up to like the average house to go, you know, just to see it would actually go into their house. The first thing we have to do, we have to fix flooding now, that's number one. That's number one, and I am not going to defund the police. As a matter of fact, I want to make sure that the police get every piece of, piece of every, Michelle, you got me with that. Sorry. All the tools they need to be successful. And because, to be quite honest, you know, right now, it's not about a peer deal, it's not about anything else. It's about keeping our city safe. And we're in the worst part of our lives right now, this very moment. We're about to lose our republic because of a lot of bad things. And at this point, we need to keep our police engaged and let them know that we are behind them, but we got to get our flooding together and also make sure that our police take care of it.
Bill Dale? Bill?
I know, just had to get the end muted off. I believe the most critical challenge facing the city now is this coronavirus. It's impacting education, we've had businesses close, over 500 in the area. That creates a lot of unemployment. We're going to have evictions after January 1st, when the rent abatement ends. I think it's something that we're going to be dealing with for the next 15 to 18 months, and the economic fallout could be really devastating for us. It's going to color every decision that we make, and it's probably going to have to be the front burner issue. Bottom line, the most important thing council needs to be aware of is the safety and well-being of citizens in the city. This is a virus that kills people, and we need to be real careful about putting people in front of that virus and doing everything we can to evade it.
Okay, you all shifted around up there on me, but I have Gary as next.
Let me see if I can unmute me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Now, repeat the question, I have a hard time with the audio.
Okay. What is your highest priority if elected? What do you want to accomplish?
Wow, there's quite a few issues that our city...
Just your highest. We got a minute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there's quite a few issues that our city has faced. From flooding, from pandemics, from the crushing economic collapse of our economy in the city of Virginia Beach. How are we going to make up the short revenue and the shortfalls of our money? I believe we have to have a businessman with the acumen to actually look to the future for viable projects. As the only commercial and residential construction contractor on here, I understand infrastructure. I understand how our old and outdated infrastructure needs to have work in there. Diameter of our culverts are no longer capable of handling the water that we bathe over and put a lot of houses up. We need to look at how we go in future development and how we must actually rank into our environment, changing of our environment, sea level rise, so we've got to be sure that we're going to be able to have a sensible building program. We cannot build on the ocean anymore and protect it.
Okay.
So flooding, infrastructure, strong, best responsible, and I bring the experience, I believe our city is doing these...
Gary, you went over your time. Nadine? Nadine?
Thank you, I'm here. So COVID, I agree with Bill. COVID-19 has basically shaken the city and all of us to our core, and our foundation is shaky. And when I say foundation, I'm talking about our business foundation, our small business foundation, our industry. And of course, I'm very obsessed with our infrastructure and our foundation, our supporting foundation for our homes and our neighborhoods. And I think that what we need to do right away is to analyze carefully the situation, step back, reset, and then strategically build on our businesses, how to roll out our flooding and infrastructure programs, and then absolutely get with economic development and get very aggressive to rebuild what's missing in our city or what's been lost during COVID. So I think that it's a reset, and we need to rebuild our foundation.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina?
I believe the most important priorities facing our city, and what I will work on, is to certainly address the pandemic and the civil unrest in our city. Both of those areas negatively impact economic development. And it's important that we guide our city through these really challenging times. Once we're able to guide our city through that, those challenging times, I will focus and continue to focus on addressing flooding, supporting our local businesses, and supporting our public safety officers.
Thank you. Rosemary?
Well, if you aren't safe, you don't feel safe, you don't have anything. And so making sure that we support our police and that our homes are safe from flooding waters is going to be really, really important. But to have pain for these things and keep everyone else is out of economic development. And I admit at the heart of working toward...
And I admit at the heart of working toward bringing jobs here through our economic development department, we're having, every month, we're bringing in new jobs, new jobs. And with our broadband ring, I represent the city of Virginia Beach on the regional plan to, for the ring. And that is going to bring in a lot of jobs with the undersea cables that are coming in. And then the other thing that we have going for us is location, location. And that's going to be the wind power. Off the coast of North Carolina and Virginia, there are going to be 500 turbines built. And it's all going to come right through here in Virginia Beach. It's going to be a real boon to creating new jobs. And that's going to get us through this.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you. Well, all of the issues that have been mentioned today are all very important. But I think one eclipses all of them, and that's keeping our city affordable. And they all play into everything that's been said. The pandemic has made our city less affordable. Flooding is making our city less affordable. Public safety issues make our city less affordable. We have to prioritize how we fund our budgets. We have to think about what we're funding, how we're funding it. We need to approach it from a needs-based budgeting perspective. If the city of Virginia Beach can't be affordable, no one can live here and it doesn't matter how big our wish list is. I've always been an advocate for flooding. It's a passionate subject matter for me. I'm passionate about our schools. I'm passionate about housing. I'm passionate about business recovery. But none of that happens if we don't have residents who are able to be successful and be able to live here and grow their families and their businesses. So my priority is how do we keep Virginia Beach affordable for everyone?
Thank you. Michael?
Well, my friends, it's not one priority, it's many. We're going to have to walk and chew gum. And actually, we're going to have to run and chew gum. We need to recover from COVID, our economy and our health system. We need to have flood control projects and improve maintenance and operations, maintain strong public schools. We have the best schools in the country. Our community has to be safe and equitable. We have to be inclusive. And we have to have mental health reform and many other priorities. But it's not just what, it's who. Now isn't the time to have leaders who are untested. We need people who are tested, strong, capable and get things done. And that's why I'm proud to serve and that's why I'm asking for your support.
Thank you. Okay, Eric, you get the next question first. Small businesses are under attack due to restrictions from COVID-19. Some businesses have gone bankrupt. People have lost their livelihoods, their jobs, their businesses. What would you do to ensure government does not burden residents so that we can recover?
Well, as a small business owner, as a funeral director, it's really something to sit in front of a family and tell them you can only have 10 people to attend your mother's service. Think about that. Your mother's lived her life for 90 to 100 years and she can only have 10 people to come together to say goodbye. We've got to be, now since everyone wants to go to Richmond, talk to Richmond, we need to use our voices from here to talk, when we want to ask for money, say Richmond, open things up. I mean, look at, look at, look at the mortality rate. We don't even have a lot, no, 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 no. She said, don't clap, she said, don't clap, she don't clap. But I mean, but the thing is, is that, you know, the mortality rates, and I have my whole thoughts on the whole COVID idea. But businesses are struggling and they don't care. Richmond does not care. So if we're talking about using our voices to go to Richmond and to beg for money, let's use our voice to go to Richmond and say, hey, our businesses are hurting here. And what you're doing is you're strangling our economic driving force and we don't, and we can't do that.
Bill?
You're faced with a really tough question. And the question you have to ask yourself is, how much is a life worth? Are you willing to sacrifice five lives to keep a business thriving? You know, are you willing to sacrifice 10 lives to keep it thriving? This pandemic is real, it's not a joke. The hard part is it's going to be around for a long time. And the toughest question every community has to face is, are lives more important than dollars? Is business more important than the safety and well-being of people? Not an easy question to answer, particularly if you're a businessperson whose business is threatened by all of this. We're going to get out of it. I don't think there's any question about that. But it's going to take time. It's probably going to take a lot of pain and a lot of hurt. And it's going to require a community that can pull together and a community that says loud and clear, we're going to stand first and foremost for the life and safety of the people who live here.
Gary?
Yes, sir. As a small business owner, since 1981, I've seen quite a few problems that have occurred through the years. We've never actually had this pandemic and that's actually affected so many businesses. My own business, we've lost 90% of our revenue. And on that end of it, you know, we still have to believe the science. This virus is for real, it's not a hoax. And as a Navy veteran, we were subjected to all kinds of inoculations and vaccines. To actually get a vaccine for this novel new virus is going to take some time. So we're in it for the long haul. But we've got to look at how we're going to guide ourselves through this. We're going to need people with experience that has been tested throughout the years, such as myself. I've made business plans, I've made budgets. I've looked after the people that we actually have to be responsible to and look for projects that are viable in the future. As a Navy veteran, I understand how the Navy works and we have to work together. Jessica was right about our economic impact.
Stop, Gary, Gary, stop. Okay, Nadine?
Hi. COVID-19 is not going to be gone soon. Like, it's something that we're going to have to live with. So we have to just understand that and then move forward. And I've been thinking about this. I mean, we do a lot of public-private partnerships in our city that affect or impact one industry, for example, most of the time. And I believe we can do an overriding public-private partnership that expands to small business. And it doesn't, it needs to be a situation where we could assist with taxes. We could disregard, you know, we can negotiate with the businesses and help them when they need it for a specific period of time. And then, of course, also to start new businesses. So I, we can't wait till COVID is over to act. And we can't expect businesses to just be hanging out there on their own. I think the city needs to step up and we need to redirect these public-private partnership funds that can be spread across the city.
Thank you. Sabrina?
I'm an advocate for small businesses. Since my time on council, this has been a huge part of my platform. Because of that, I've been out working with business owners, talking to them to find out ways to help support them and sustain them through this pandemic. I've had the opportunity to support them by hosting the Ignite Business Series that helps them become aware of opportunities within our city and also provides educations and tools to ensure that they grow and expand. What I will continue to do is to support our businesses, to support our residents by coining and guiding them and helping them through the process with resources and ensuring that they are able to be sustainable in this pandemic.
Thank you. Rosemary?
Well, I'm here to tell you, we have been working. This is, there's been a lot that the city has been doing. And I'll give you some examples. We were the first city in the state to get our beaches opened. And we worked really hard to get that point. And our tourism industry, even though it is struggling, is doing better than any other resort across the country. We are doing better than all the others. We put in, we took away the meal tax for two months to get people to encourage them to eat out and utilize the restaurants. We put in eight and a half million dollars of local money to provide grants for small businesses, nonprofits and residents so that they could pay their rent, so that they didn't let their utilities cut off and so they could help weather the storm. And then the CARES Act money, we have dedicated millions of dollars to help people get through this. And we will get through this together.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you. Well, I think that the first thing we have to talk about when answering the question about smart strategies for how we support our businesses, we have to figure out how we, as the government, get out of the way. What can we do to make a small business owner's job easier? The truth of the matter is, a lot of the regulations that we're dealing with at the city level, we have no control over and we don't have the authority to do anything about. But we can get out of the way. One of those examples of what we've done is we've allowed restaurants to have outside seating in places we normally wouldn't let them have. That seems like a small thing, but it's a very big thing. Another crucial thing that we have to talk about is getting kids back in school is a big part of our labor issue because parents, like me, cannot work when we are trying to virtually teach our children. And I have to tell you, as a mom to a five-year-old who started school for the first time this year, it was heartbreaking to hear my son come home and tell me he hated school because he stared at a computer all day. And I'm very glad he's back in class. And I understand the concerns as a parent. And it is a scary situation, but it's a critical piece to getting our labor back into the workforce.
Okay, Michael?
Well, Jessica's absolutely right. One of the key elements is to reduce the tax and regulatory burden on businesses large and small. Government should get out of the way and help businesses be successful. But in addition, a key issue that's facing us today is what to do with the $47 million in CARES Act funding. This is a huge amount of revenue, of resources that are available and we must use them wisely. We should direct them to residents, businesses and nonprofits to help all of those groups and individuals recover from the many stresses and expenses they have related to COVID. But at the end of the day, it's about making sure that whether we're facing COVID or we're not facing COVID, Virginia Beach is a pro-business city. And with Michael Burley chief on city council, if you give me the chance to serve, we'll continue to always be a pro-business city to make sure that businesses, large and small, have a chance to succeed and the regulatory and tax burden is low. Thank you.
Conrad?
COVID zapped economic demand. That's the simple premise. So business needs capital needed to continue to function. We can marginally cut taxes locally, but that's not going to be a sizable boost to business capital. So we would need another CARES Act from Washington to Richmond, then back down to us. We need to get capital into the hands of businesses so they can keep functioning. And it's as simple as that.
Thank you. So now we're going to start with Bill. Okay, I'm going to like put these questions here together. What specific spending would you be proposing to reduce or defer to make up the shortfall in the general budget fund? What taxes and fees would you cut to leave more money in the citizens' pockets? And would the BEPole tax help, if we get eliminated that, help businesses?
Okay, that's a lot to put on the plate at one time. The first question has to be, what is the deficit in the budget? How short is the budget? I think, you know, we've already heard the resources coming in are a little bit higher than were anticipated. So we may not be hurting as bad as we had thought of in the first place. I think before I do anything else, the first thing I'd look at is freezing, freezing the addition of any people except for those services that are deemed as being critically important. I mean, police and fire. You know, and you go down through the list as far as that goes. In terms of cutting, I think you'd look to the departments and see if it's not possible to take a 4% cut or a 5% cut and see what that does in terms of the shortfall in the budget. I wouldn't be cutting taxes, I'm afraid. You don't do that when you've got a shortfall as far as that goes. But I think you make up for the deficit as much as possible. You know, and the ultimate goal is not raising taxes at this time.
Thank you. Gary?
Yes, I've thought about this problem quite a bit. And as a businessman, I understand you just not can tax yourself to prosperity. We're in a situation here where it's taxing spend. If the revenues fall short, we actually hit the property owners or increase another fee. We've got to learn that you cannot tax your way out of debt. It just simply will not work. And as a businessman, we've got to understand that regulations are strangling us. We've got to ask the city to be more productive in reducing the red tape so entrepreneurs like myself. And we will eventually get through this COVID. And as an entrepreneur, we will start businesses back up again. But we've got to look at our shortfall. I will look at each and every budget that the city of Virginia Beach spends money on. And once you start borrowing money or increase our bond limit, you're going down the wrong path. I don't care if money's cheap right now. If you continue to borrow money, you must pay it back.
Okay, stop, 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 Gary. Can you not see the stop sign? Okay. You cannot, okay. All right. I'll try and give you like the 15-second warning next time. Okay, Nadine, you go.
Okay, so I'll start with the BEPole tax. I absolutely think that is one of the areas that we can temporarily put aside. But I want to say that we are one of the largest governments for a city our size in the country. I read that and I will get you all where I read that. But there, within all those departments, there are definitely areas that we could get more fiscally conservative in. And I think that that is probably, I agree with Bill, that is exactly the place I would start. I would look at that budget and I would treat it like my own budget in my house and make sure that I carefully went through this and made this government more impactful, probably more streamlined, until a time comes where we could develop back out again.
Thank you. Sabrina?
One of the important things that city council has had to do was to ensure that we're keeping ourselves abreast and having reports on what the economy looks like through a pandemic. So just having that reoccurring statistics of how we're being impacted across the board is important. And I think it's important for us to come up with a recovery plan. So once COVID is passed or we get, you know, through COVID a bit, we can go back to the budget and look at where we can make cuts, where we can address priorities. As far as the BEPole tax, I'm sure you know that many of the business owners have struggled paying that during the pandemic. So the city council has provided delays so that they didn't have to pay that right away. And I do know that if you contact our treasurer and explain your situation, they're able to work with you through those situations when it concerns the BEPole tax.
All right, thank you. Rosemary?
Yes. We have weathered the storm better than most is because the council acted very smartly. We rolled back spending. We've had a hiring freeze and we got our beaches open and our economy going. So all of these things the council did to act quickly to make sure that we would be in a good financial state. And I am the only person that I know of has been able to do anything about the BEPole tax. I had this idea and I took it to Sal Ayquinto, who was a delegate. And it was to freeze, oh, not to freeze. The first two years of a business, which is the very toughest for them because they struggle, is not to pay the BEPole tax. And we made it a local option. And it's always been a big, where they wouldn't let you do it with the general assembly because of EML. But I was a past EML president. I was able to work with them to get them to stand down on it. And we made it a local option. So in the city of Virginia Beach, when you open a business, the first two years, you do not have to pay the BEPole tax.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Jessica?
Thank you. Well, I would like to say, I'm very proud to say that I had a critical role in the crafting the budget this year. And one of the things I said to my colleagues on council and to the city manager at the time was that we cannot have tax or fee increases through COVID. It's not possible, it's not fair. And people are in desperate need of every penny they can find. And I was quoted in the news saying, when we stopped the meals tax for a period of time, when I was criticized for supporting that, I said, well, if you saw $5 on the street, would you pick it up? And the answer is, you would. But in terms of what we're doing, we're fortunate that we live in a state that we have to have a balanced budget. And we had enough foresight on council to craft a budget that was lean and flexible so that we could, we could plan for the situations that we have. And I think we should continue to do that. We desperately need to make sure that our city stays affordable. And as I've already stated, that is my number one priority.
Michael?
Well, your city council worked very hard in a very difficult situation to help to close that gap, to respond effectively to the challenges we faced from COVID. And as been mentioned, we're fortunate that the revenues have been coming in higher than predicted. And we're not in a difficult position that many municipalities find themselves in because we worked together unanimously to craft a budget that closed the gap without tax and fee increases. we work together unanimously to craft a budget that closed the gap without tax and fee increases. Just some of the ways that we did that was by eliminating raises per city staff, which was unfortunate but necessary, by imposing a hiring freeze, by delaying some capital projects that we're eventually going to have to address, and a number of other reductions and delays that put us in a position to be strong and put us in a very strong position to emerge from COVID, ready to be successful.
Thank you. Conrad?
Take COVID out of the, out of the equation. Should the BPO tax exist at all? No? With COVID, we're going to have to make some tough budget choices. But I noticed that some of the budget choices they decided to do was cut back a little bit on some planned flooding mitigation projects in the southern end of the city. But they did maintain the scheduled.
That didn't happen.
That I'm corrected. There is still a lot of maintenance that they're going forth in planning with the dome side, which I'm not particularly a fan of at this time either. I don't like not securing infrastructure, but for going for big business.
Eric?
I've got about 50,000 things I want to say at one. The first thing is, I'm not going to let our schools strong-arm our school board and ask council for more money. That's, while I'm pro-education, I'm not going to let that happen. Number two, number two, I want to make sure that if you, and Councilwoman Wilson was 100% correct. She, she did craft that BPO tax bill and sent it off to the General Assembly and it was passed.[1769.02]